So, welcome. This is our second town hall. The first one was an institutional town hall meeting and we had this room packed. So, I'm gonna say that the School of Medicine is all at work. Or either they saw the first one and said, "What the heck? It's not that cool." But, we're experimenting. We've never done this since 1955, that I know of. And I've known four deans now and none have done this in this manner. So, we're giving it a try. This time is maybe not the best because it's noon and the clinicians in particular are working. We'll probably have to try switching the time. But it's a... We're trying every way we can to communicate across this institution and tell what we're doing and be sure we get it to everyone. So, I'd like to make about three little small quick comments and then we'll start. When we start, there are people on each row with microphones and if you're comfortable speaking into a microphone and asking a question, please do that. If you'd rather have a comfort zone of writing a note, they'll read your note for you and won't say your name if you don't want them to. So, we're trying every way we can to make you have a comfort zone in what we're doing here. So, three things I'd like to say first, and that is watching the Boston horrible event. It made me think of us and what we do every day here and particularly in taking care of patients and what all of you do to make this place work. And in a disaster, we are incredible. We're as incredible as they are and Mass General and the Brigham, Children's up there did a marvelous job if you read what happened there. So, it can happen here and it does. It happens every day. Trauma happens here every day and we take care of it. Now, thank you. The School of Medicine accreditation that occurred last year, I really wanna thank you for that. Recently, Dr. Woodward and I, two weeks ago, were at a council of deans meeting in Scottsdale. And just about everywhere we went, people knew about how well we did on that accreditation and asked questions, "How did you do it?" And that includes Harvard and every other school that we would run into, they would say, "How did you do that?" And so, we've gotten some really good notoriety about that. But it's due to you, it's not due to me or anybody else in particular, it's due to all of you. So, what we're doing here from an education standpoint is pretty remarkable and I thank you. And the last thing is that this legislative session just ended. In September, we sat down to decide what we were gonna accomplish, we hope, over those January, February, March. It's always an interesting time down there. And we had a plan to stay whole in our budget, hopefully get a little money for PERS and get a bond issue that would allow us to start building our School of Medicine. And thankfully, we got all three. And the reason we got all three of those is again because of you. We're very well respected down there. We can get in and talk to the leaders and they wanna know about the medical center and they appreciate what we do, not only for the patient care but the economic engine that we are. So, we have a whole budget. We got $7 million for our PERS that we didn't get last year because there's been an increase of what we have to contribute to that. And third, we got $31 million added to our $14 million to start building a new School of Medicine building. And next year, we'll get the $30 million for the total of around $75 or so million. So, that should start soon and become very disruptive here. But that's a good disruption that we look forward to. So, I'm open to any questions if I can answer them or I don't want to answer them. I have some other people that'll come up here and answer it for you. But I will try to answer anything that you might want to throw at me. So, I'm open for the first question. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and leave. John, he needs a microphone.
Who's that first?
Thank you for doing this. Could you comment on the medical corridor, the progress, any sharing with community hospitals? What's happening?
That's a good question, John. Let's... Let me go back real quick on the medical corridor. One day, we at the medical center were looking at just the geography of who we are and where we are. And if you look, starting with the VA and us and the Health Department and the Jackson Medical Mall, and you jump on out there to Jackson-Hines Comprehensive Health and in between there is a very good airport, we thought, "My goodness, what a corridor. Lots of people would love in a city to have this." About that same time, the governor had gone to Texas Medical Center with a whole group of people to look at the Texas Medical Center and how they did things. Now, I don't know if he remembered that Houston has 4 million people, the state of Mississippi has 3. So, it is a little different animal than we are. But yet again, Texas Medical Center being the largest medical center in the world has a huge economic impact and a huge impact on the community and that state. So, he wanted to transplant that to us. We had already started talking about this corridor as we looked at it geographically. And so, we presented that to him as something could be done. But we thought that we didn't want to be the total drivers of that because of some competitive things that go on in the community. And I told him that we should get the other hospital systems involved and that would include HMA, Baptist St. Dominics, and why didn't we get other colleges involved, Bellhaven, Melzapp, other businesses? And so, that grew into this huge aspect of corridors. Then that got into healthcare zones. I don't know how many of you deal directly with the governor, but once he gets an idea, it's full speed ahead. So, he went right to the legislature last year saying, "Let's have these healthcare zones." And that got really funny around the state because everybody said, "Oh, you're gonna leave us out and it's all gonna be Jackson getting everything." So, basically, the state of Mississippi has multiple zones. And the purpose from the standpoint of the legislature and the governor is to establish these mainly economic zones to encourage healthcare industry to come into the area. We are already doing that with our research and other things and that we commonly do here that stimulates growth of the healthcare industry. What he wants to do is do that for the whole state. And also, he wanted to tag on to that to keep people in Mississippi for their healthcare. Now, there are tax benefits for bringing an industry into any of these zones or corridor, the kind of two terms that are used interchangeably. Those don't help us, you know? We're not... We don't pay taxes. But it would help certain other people that... in counties that could encourage industry. So, it's mainly an economic driver. Does that make sense? Thank you. Other questions?
Yes. This question has to do with medical education. So, in the second year of medical school, attendance at classes falls off appreciably. Students do well on their USM Elite tests, but attendance is sometimes no more than 25 percent. And the question is, it seems that education's being reduced to bullet points rather than interaction between faculty and students. Does... I mean, does this concern you or does it concern the administration here?
Certainly it does and I'm gonna ask Dr. Woodward to come forward too and answer some of that. We heard that a lot in Scottsdale. Now, most of you know my age, you know, when I went to medical school. And it was very simple then, you sat down in a classroom and somebody lectured to you. That's the number one thing they'll kill you right now on your accreditation. They want small group, non-passive lectures, they want interactive lectures. And that's what's hurt multiple schools around the nation. So, yes, it does bother me. I assume that everyone should come to class because it's what they need. But we did see out there that there's more and more online learning, there's even talk about doing online for medical schools and having one professor teach cardiovascular physiology for the entire country. I mean, that's how wild the talk is now. So, we hear this from every school that that's frustrating to the professors. You wanna add to that?
I don't really have a lot to add to that. He covered the points. The expected delivery modes for education has changed, not only medical education but undergraduate education. They're kind of struggling with this across the spectrum. Most of us that are doing the educating grew up under the system where you came to class and you listened to the professor and you stopped by later and you asked your questions. And now, there is just a huge emphasis on being able to deliver the material in multiple ways so that the student as the learner has the opportunity to come to class if that's what they prefer, if that's what they think is best for them. But they have other ways to learn the material as well. And as Jimmy mentioned, the whole online communities is really gonna be our next big hurdle and to sort out how that fits with medical education. That's our next big challenge.
I'd be extremely worried if our scores were going down and we weren't doing well on accreditation. I know it's frustrating for you to sit here with a room not filled. I have that feeling a little bit right now. But the point is that I know it's frustrating, but they're really doing online. They're copying every word you say and doing it online locally. I wish we had a better answer, but it is what it is and every school in the nation's talking about it. Yes?
Mississippi, it seems like they're not gonna be expanding Medicaid. How will that impact UMC?
So, Medicaid expansion, how much I think and talk about that, it's in my sleep. It's... Here's the real condensed version. If you don't expand Medicaid, if your state does not expand Medicaid and the disproportionate share of money that we get from the federal government to help us with the uninsured and the underserved were to go away, which is supposed to on the Affordable Care Act, we would be in trouble. Because we get 68 million of the 200 million from the federal government for disproportionate share. That's a 5 percent margin for us. The governor and legislature is well aware that there's a chance that that money could go away if they don't expand Medicaid. Now, they got a reprieve last week because the Secretary of HHS, Secretary Sibylle, she called the governor personally and said, "I'm gonna extend one more year before I cut the disproportionate share." So, 50 percent of the hospitals in Mississippi would be in the red if that disproportionate share of money goes away. So, that's what we're watching carefully. I don't believe that's gonna happen. They're either gonna have to expand Medicaid or find a way to fund us with that disproportionate share of money.
So, this is kind of an add-on to Greg's question, but... So, for instance, I gave a lecture last fall, which was attended by four people out of an M1 class of 140. And I, if anything, I tend to over-prepare my lectures. So, that was time that essentially went to waste as far as I could tell. So, is it really a valuable use of the faculty if there are no students at the lectures? We could just post the PowerPoints with the voice track and have done with the lectures and just get the lectures all together?
So, one of the interesting things that we heard from Stanford, who gave the talk on this online courses they offer around the world, MOOC, yes, that's a new term I learned, MOOC. And I have no idea what it stands for. But it stands for some kind of online training. So, they showed... They put it out there, one course, and they thought they'd get 1,000 people to sign up around the world. There's 100,000 signed up. But one of the experiments they did was they gave the lecture to half the group with voice and PowerPoints and everything. And the other half, they gave the same lecture, but down in the right-hand side was a view of the professor and could see body language and hear them speak and see them. The people that had that one made better grades than the one they didn't see the professor. So, that doesn't help you with four people in your room. But there's no doubt that where we have to be is interplay. Now, my suggestion, and I don't have this with any kind of background, is I would suggest some questions from that lecture, that only way you could get that question is come to the lecture. But of course, they're recording everything you say, they're writing down everything. They got you cold. And I hate that that's the way it is. But that's the way they think now, that's the way they learn and we hear it over and over. No, we don't want you to leave, we need you here. And your whole body language and face is being transmitted across the internet. I understand they do it right away over YouTube. So, I wish it were better, but no.
Is it being videotaped?
Pardon?
Is it being videotaped, just audio taped?
I understand that they can videotape it, yes. Remember now, remember this old device. Ask President-elect or President-not-elect Romney, you can get hurt with this device or you can get help with it. So, yeah, they probably were recording it visually and audio. Thanks. Go ahead.
Would you comment on the potential merger or if there's a merger with MMRC and how would it affect the clinicians and consultative services we might have to provide there?
Right. He's talking about Methodist Rehab, some of you that don't know the abbreviations. Methodist Rehab started here over 40 years ago and attached to our building and we have no say-so about them. So, I was here when that started. I have been unhappy about this for 40 years. And if I could find the person who did that, if they're not already dead, we could arrange some things. It was dumb and dumber, but it is... That has nothing to do with how good of service they give and the care they give for patients. But the fact that something like that is connected to our campus is just not a good deal. So, we have been working for quite some time, for several years now, working with a relationship. The chairman of their board is a good friend, Matt Holloman. He and I got together with Chancellor Jones and let's say, "That's find a way to make it happen." So, we have a draft agreement that they have approved. We're still working with the college board to see if they'll approve it. There's some tweaking they wanna do and we're doing that this month. What will happen is that we will pull all groups together and very quickly, unless something changes, all their physicians will be part of our physicians. We'll have their employees and our employees together. We'll have people from us on their board. We'll have a marketing of our names together. The idea is that if you look between Houston and Atlanta, we would be a big-time rehabilitation center if we're together. We will have basically no competition in the mid-south. And so, we felt that together we could be much stronger than they would apart. We would start a neuroscience institute with some of the money and with a... eventually, a department of, what do they call it?
Physical medicine rehabilitation.
Physical medicine and rehabilitation. So, there are good plans in there, the tiny details are not done. I meet monthly with our university rehab leadership, explain to them what's going on and make sure they have a conversation. We are hiring together a consultant group to come in and talk to both sides to see cultural differences. But we'll be coming together, it's the right thing to do for the patients. Oh, by the way, they have agreed that they will take all uninsured and all Medicaid. Whatever we take, they'll take. And that was what split us up. And that is where I have had the most angst and a little bit of anger. But they've agreed to do that. Yes?
Could you give us an idea of, excuse me, of the status of a new research building?
All right. So, Dr. Hall sent you here, I guess. So, Jim Wintz assures me that there's no problem with money and that we can get that. But... And that's not true either. As of today, we're gonna build the research building. It will not be as large a footprint probably as we thought. We have about $20 million so-called leftover earmark money that comes to us from the Department of Commerce that we have to spend by the September of '15. And so, we're meeting this week and next week to finalize exactly what will be there. There will be a vivarium there, probably three or four floors and a couple of shell floors, something like that. And we need it. I know you'd like that tunnel, but the tunnel's pretty expensive. We're talking about a tunnel between the two research buildings for the vivarium. That's a couple of million dollars for a tunnel for his rodents. Anyhow, we need this and want this and it's possible that that and the School of Medicine and our garage that'll be going up, which is needed because we're gonna lose about 900 parking spaces between the research building and the School of Medicine. So, it looks like it's a go.
Going along with your last comments about MMRC and some comments we've heard before as far as the kind of the joint mission of all the medical centers in Jackson, not just ours, working together to provide appropriate healthcare. Are there ways and is there a way that we are holding the other hospitals accountable for pulling their weight as far as seeing the patient load in our area?
Well, I pray. Yeah, that's... I bring that to everyone's attention. The good news is that on a monthly basis now, through the help of the Greater Jackson Chamber of Commerce, the four systems meet and I ask them to bring the VA in too. So, all five of us sit down and meet and talk about our problems just to show a perception that at least we're trying to work together, we're building a habitat house together. They have to make money just like we do. They understand that we see the bulk of the underserved and uninsured. And even though they feel competitive with us, the number one thing is they don't want anything to happen to us. And so, when they talk about dish payments and Medicaid, they are extremely supportive of our viewpoint and their viewpoint. We need to bring stability to that. When you look at us though, 50 percent of our patients come from outside the Jackson area. We have about 17 percent of the local market. Is that right, Ron? We have about 17 percent, Baptist St. Dominics have about 20 each and HMA has about 30. I don't know if that adds up to 100. But we... For us to try to increase from 17 percent to 20 percent is not worth the money, too much. We looked at our hospital money, for instance, and 45 percent of our revenue in the hospital systems comes from 11 or 12 percent of our patients. And when we drill down on those, they come to us by air and ground, not by local patients coming here. Where we make our money and take care of people is very complex cases of transplant, children's services, trauma, other strange things that we do that nobody else does. And that is a story that I tell over and over to them and they are more supportive of us now than they've ever been before. To make them take patients, I don't have that ability. I was in private practice, I know how it works and it's... It is what it is. They are under one gun though, and that's the IRS. They have to report under 990, is that right, Jim? Form where they have to put down how much charitable work they do. And so, it's very visible to the IRS around the nation now, what the nonprofits are doing. And so, the pressure on them is coming from that world, not from ours. But I can tell you, I'm open with them. This is... This is easier than I thought. I don't even need this cavalier vest. There we go.
I've seen recently on the news where Jackson State University is considering building their own stadium. If this does come about, what will become of the stadium over here?
So, if they get their own stadium, we get the stadium across the street. Right now, that property belongs... Originally belonged to the state of Mississippi. Of course, all of it belongs to the state of Mississippi, Jackson State and us. But that property belonged to Department of Finance Administration. They got tired of running that stadium. So, they came up with a deal that if Jackson State, which plays its games there, Ole Miss State, Southern, all moved out of there, as you know, years ago. And so, they want their own stadium, just like the other colleges do, on their campus. If they can build one there, then all of that property converts to us. Right now, we spend around $600,000 a year that we give to Jackson State to be able to park there and we maintain all the pavement and everything. And then, we got the lube shop and the backyard burger, which now is smoothie or something. We got those too, that's the deal. And... But we get the stadium. The problem with getting the stadium is it's about 8 million to take it down. One cruise missile's just a million. But the point is that right now, we don't need it and so, we're in no rush. But the good news is that we get it as soon as they get a stadium. They went out in the public and wanted a dome stadium, which I'm not against at all. I wish they had a dome stadium. They'd give us something better than a Coliseum on the fairgrounds, you know, a nicer facility. But they wanted one that held 70,000 and was gonna cost a couple of hundred million. And I think they're gonna have trouble getting to that level. But we do get that stadium. There's no money exchanged except what we're paying now for rent.
Dr. Keaton, I hope you haven't talked about this already, but are the plans moving forward for the increase in residents and medical students in the... On the coast? And is it... Do you anticipate that that would be an expensive proposition or will it eventually bring money to us?
When you say the coast, are you talking about... I'm not sure what you're talking about there.
Well, I... We've heard in the past that residents, for example, will start to rotate through the Air Force Hospital.
The Air Force... We don't have residents rotating there. They rotate with us, their residents rotate with us. But we don't have any rotating there. Do we, Luanne? I don't know. You might can answer that better. But they wrote... Their residents rotate with us and they only have two residency programs now, surgery and medicine.
For a number of years, especially after Katrina, we've had conversations with them off and on about the possibilities. But in the last two years, those talks have kinda died down. We do take some of their residents here for rotations that they can't provide, but that's all that we have in place with them right now. It could be a possibility that if they did expand their residency programs and had the right faculty, et cetera, that we could establish some medical student rotations down there. But at this point, that's pretty far off into the future. They don't have the infrastructure that we would need.
They're struggling to get their pediatric and OB program started, is my understanding. Here we are. Here you go, right here.
This is a question for medical education too. Would you have any plans for expanding the training to PhD/MD programs?
Expansion of the MD/PhD?
PhD/MD, which is a newer program most medical schools are starting to support the translational medicine emphasis.
That is not one that we've looked at, but we would like, as we're growing the class size, to expand the number of our PhD/MD students. In the MD/PhD program, now, we could look at the possibility of, you know, a different kind of entry into that program, but we've not specifically looked at that.
Well, we're sort of on the subject. What are your thoughts about increasing graduate medical education? I understand a lot of people didn't match this year. So, as our class sizes increase, where are we gonna put those people?
All right. So, I'll start this and Luanne can give you even more on that. That was a scary thing for around the United States is they pushed us, increased the number of medical students. But we saw the federal government cutting down on the reimbursement in effect for us from CMS for residents and interns. And we thought that was gonna cross over, but we were gonna have a few years, but it seemed to cross this year. So, we have... She'll know the numbers better than me, but around the nation, around 9,000 didn't match. And there were 1,000 places for them to match into after the match was over. So-called scramble, they have a different word, soap now for this. And so, all of a sudden, everybody, and this was big talk two weeks ago at the AMC meeting of what are we gonna do? It appears that the ones that are gonna get hurt the quickest will be the foreign medical graduates. But there is a large number of Americans trained, particularly in the Caribbean, and they would maybe have some issues there. But we are... We put, at our institution here, we're over the cap and our hospital systems funds about $5 million a year worth of residents and interns. We're about 100 million over the cap. They're approved, it's just that we're over the cap from the money we get from Washington. So, that is a major concern. In our state, we don't see that as a problem of that we ought to produce less physicians. You could say that maybe in some other states, maybe you ought to cut back on the physicians that you train. But we don't see that in our state where we still have the lowest number per capita. But it's gonna be an issue. It's purely part of the whole budget issue. It's in the budget issue to cut that money. You wanna address that anymore? You know those numbers, she deals with that scramble and that match.
Well, as he mentioned, some would say... Well, as he mentioned, some would say this is the time to stop the expansion plans for the medical schools, and at this point, and that's something that we need to look at and think about on an ongoing basis, but at this point, we think we need to continue to grow, because like you said, we're last in physicians per capita. What we have done here over the years is we have managed to maintain a steady ratio between our medical students and our residency positions, our GME positions. We have continued to grow those kind of together in concert, which has served to some degree to protect our own students from what's happening at that national level where the lines haven't exactly crossed, but they're certainly getting a little bit closer together when you look at total number of GME positions and total number of applicants. So the things that we can do here, that we can impact at this place, would be to continue to grow our residency programs. The federal funding is not available, that has been capped, so we have to find those dollars in other places, but continue to grow the positions and hopefully maintain that ratio. It will take a little time to see what all's going to happen at the national level, what impact the DO school will have on our GME positions. They'll graduate their first class next year. Next year will be our first graduating class of 135 students, our largest class so far in the last 20, 25 years. So, you know, there's, there, it's one of those things with some moving parts that we've just got to continue to monitor and watch, but we don't anticipate increased federal dollars for GME positions. We would like that, and we're lobbying for that, and the AAMC is pushing for that, and others are as well, but that can't be our only plan. We've got to continue to grow those, grow those funding lines here.
So we had eight that didn't match, they have no residency. Can you imagine being in debt, 150,000, and you have no place to go? Now, let me tell you, a group of those eight were people that didn't listen very well. They decided they wanted to do specialties, that they were advised by Dr. Woodward and her whole team, that your step scores and other scores are not going to support that right now. If you go into dermatology right now, you better be like one or two in your class around the nation. It's just the nature of the beast, and that's what it is. Some don't listen very well and get into the match and say, "Oh, my God, you were right."
Greg, those are probably the same ones that are not coming to class.
Right. And so they are supposed to be adults, and they're supposed to listen, and some of them don't. And when we drill down on that eight, there were quite a number of that probably have that now are going to have to go again, probably next year, and do research or something, we'll see what happens. But we work hard to counsel these students when they get to that point. Some of them, one of them, for instance, was influenced by his father, who was in a specialty that he wanted to go in, but he didn't have the grades to support that particular specialty. So there are reasons that these things happen, but it is nationally a scary moment in our GME world. Another question?
Another medical education question. The PA students, many of us are giving lectures to them from Mississippi College, and I know they've been asked, or they've asked for some of their clinical training to take place too. Are other hospitals in the city or around the state helping provide some of their clinical training? And I ask that because our medical school class is increasing in size, and we're finding ways to put them on the rotations, but with nurse practitioners and PAs, the teams are getting to be very large, and it's a little difficult to teach to all the different levels, especially bringing in those PA students.
One of our accreditation standards with the LCME is that at places like our institution where you have learners from other areas in healthcare, that the presence of the other learners does not negatively impact the medical students. So that is something that we all have to kind of keep front and center as we're looking at rotations. Because of that, we have limited rotations to other students, visiting students from other medical schools, et cetera, to the fourth year because of the capacity issues in the third year. And we have some other limitations, it has to be from an LCME-accredited school, et cetera. So we've tried to ma, we've tried to monitor that and to create ways that we can continue to grow our own class size and offer experiences for others, but not at the expense of our own students. The PA school, we are one of their clinical partners, they have many clinical partners across the state, but, and they had to have those established about a year in advance of their first accreditation visit, which has now been a year or two, it was in the fall, I think of '11. But, but they have had some struggles with some of the other clinical sites that committed to them at the beginning backing out, you know, they've gotten in a pinch a few times. So they're still trying to sort out all of their clinical sites, but we are one, we are one of many, but as it turns out, there are some things that they're kind of routinely looking to us for. That is a constant challenge, the clinical capacity for our learners. All of our schools are growing. The group of deans, we all sat down a couple of weeks ago, it was actually a couple of months ago, back in February, and thought about, okay, what are our growth plans across all these schools, and how many students do we think we'll have here on campus in the next couple of years? And between all the schools and the growth plans that are in place, we're thinking in two years across the spectrum, we would have a couple of hundred more students on our campus. So we have to all kind of monitor this as a group.
So we are going to have to all be in this together, we're going to have to have PAs, nurse practitioners, advanced practice nurses. We can't train enough just MDs to do what we need to do, particularly in this state, so we've got to be in this together. You read in the paper or certain things about the frustration among some physicians and what nurse practitioners can do. We partner with nurse practitioners and advanced nurses here on our campus, probably as good as any place in the country, and we have a partnership that's really important, and we will expand that in every way we can. Well, I really appreciate all of you being here. We're going to tweak this a bit with time, we'll be able, because you came in with your card, we'll know where you came from, not, we're not taking role, by the way. We're trying to figure out the best way to get information to the entire 9,100 employees, and this is just one way, and we're going to keep doing it over and over. So I appreciate all of you being here, thank you very much.